Carrie, I believe we're ready.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Good evening, everyone, and I thank you for tuning into the 2022 Hamilton County School Board debates. My name is Carrie Randolph, and I'm the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0. To begin, I would like to draw your attention to the closed captioning feature on your video player, which will turn on subtitles should you need or prefer them. In 2015, Chattanooga 2.0 started as a movement to transform education and workforce development outcomes from birth to career. We have since grown to a community-wide network of organizations collaborating across sectors to ensure that children and youth in Chattanooga and Hamilton County have access to quality education and career opportunities to help them realize their full potential. I'd like to thank our partners, the Chattanooga Times Free Press and Local 3 News for co-hosting these critically important debates alongside us. I'd also like to thank our candidates tonight for participating in this important conversation and for their interest in serving on behalf of students, families, and teachers on the Hamilton County School Board. The candidates answered questions on our candidate profile questionnaire that we provided and answered an educational equity questionnaire ahead of tonight's debate. If you'd like to read their full responses, visit chat to that C-H-A-T-T-the-number-two.org backslash vote. Chattanooga 2.0 was born out of a recognition that strong educational outcomes, birth through career, are essential to our community's economic growth and progress and require community-wide commitment and action. We believe that strong leadership at all levels of the educational system is necessary to our success as a community, and we recognize just how important these races are during today's challenging times and into the future. Thank you again for joining us. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve our community in such a vital way. Without any further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce David Carroll of Local 3 News and Dave Flesner of the Chattanooga Times Free Press, who will be moderating this evening's debate. David and Dave?
All right, Carrie, thanks so much, and thanks also to John Baker and Ben Connor for being with us this evening. David, I will go over the rules of the debate for you and for those who are watching at home. Both candidates must leave your cameras and microphones on at all times during the debate. Also, each of you will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. Dave and I will then alternate asking questions. One of the questions that you'll hear this evening will be presented by a stakeholder who lives in your district. At the end, each of you will pose a question to your opponent, whatever you feel needs to be asked. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question, and then there's an optional 30-second rebuttal if the moderators feel it's appropriate to do so. When your time is up, you will hear a sound, usually a bell, and usually it's quite loud. So that means it's time to stop. The time begins as soon as you begin speaking. Now, when you hear that bell at the end of an answer, we will allow you to complete a sentence, but we will not allow you to begin a new thought. Hello, Dave Flesner.
Evening and welcome. Thank you, candidates, for being with us tonight. And at the end of tonight's forum, each of you will be given two minutes to make a closing statement. As moderators, David and I may ask questions to clarify a particular statement or to explain a particular point as needed. During tonight's forum, candidates may not use the internet, cellphone, or any other outside assistance to answer questions during the debate. The goal of our debate today is to introduce the candidates of District 8 and their platforms. We expect the candidates will conduct themselves in a respectful manner and not use derogatory language. And we will start with opening statements in alphabetical order and then alternate who answers each question as we proceed. As we begin, candidates, do you have any questions about the rules of tonight's debate? Well, if not, John Baker, you're up first. You have two minutes to make your opening statement.
All right. For my opening statement, I'm going to read from the Bible here. This is Ephesians 4:14. Then we will no longer be infants tossed back and forth by the waves and blown here and there by every wind of teaching and by the cunning and craftiness of men in their deceitful scheming. Instead, speaking the truth in love, we will in all things grow up into him who is the head, that is Christ. I decided to run for the school board, not because I didn't like the color of the buildings, but because during COVID, we discovered what was actually going on in the classrooms. This is wrong. This is all wrong. Kids are not objects for grooming. They're not objects for indoctrination. We give them to the school system to be educated. The fact is, is that we're spending a half a billion dollars for failing schools. I feel that 60% of the students not being able to read at grade level qualifies as failing. Thank you.
Thank you, John Baker. Ben Connor, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. I'm Ben Connor, husband, father of four girls, all under the age of 10, and for very good reasons to care about our public schools. In my children's school, I volunteer as a room parent, PTA, basketball coach, and even as a volunteer science lab teacher. So I've seen front, up close and personal, the challenges that our teachers face, keeping our kids safe and the buildings that we have to do all of this inside. And this is why I'm running for Hamilton County School Board. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Our first question is on the topic of school safety. John Baker, you'll answer this one first. School safety is on the top of the minds for many of us in Tennessee. The Uvalde, Texas, school shootings, of course, continues to make headlines, both the shooting itself and the aftermath and the resulting investigation. Hamilton County Schools and Hamilton County Commission are spending almost $2 million to place security officers in every school building. Is that enough to ensure the safety of our students? If not, what other measures would you support the school board taking if you are elected? John?
There's a difference between spending and actually spending. The Hamilton County Sheriff's Department has struggled to try and fill the SRO positions. For the last several years, they have failed. Our superintendent said as much. The idea that we're suddenly going to wave a magic wand and fill all these positions, even though we're offering multi-year contracts, bonuses, nobody wants to do it. The reality is, is that there's been almost 2,000 shootings since 1970. This is not new information. Yet our school system has done nothing. Two years ago, they had zero budgeted for school security. So tell me how they're suddenly going to turn on a dime and hire more than the 24 SROs they currently have to cover 79 buildings. It ain't going to happen. We need to come up with a much different plan.
All right, thank you, sir. Ben Connor, your time.
So I've long been concerned with this, and I'm even on record saying that we need to make sure we have the proper amount of SSOs, specifically the officers developed and trained to de-escalate situations. I'm assuming that John doesn't know that we actually just did pass the county commission and the school board to hire these people. Before, we did not have enough funding for those positions. We now have received funding for the 26 additional officers that we need to cover every Hamilton County school. I applaud the superintendent, the school board, and the county commissioners for making that happen, and I look forward to having a trained SSO in every single Hamilton County school.
All right, John, did you have any rebuttal to that?
Yes, I do. There's a difference between a SRO, school resource officer, who is permitted to carry a weapon, and an SSO who is not permitted to carry a weapon. I cannot see where the value of an SSO is in the situation of an active shooter. He will be unarmed and unable to do anything about it.
Gentlemen, I'll have to rebuttal again and correct Mr. Baker. The SSOs are required to carry a firearm, just like their counterparts. The only difference in the two is that the SSO is trained to de-escalate situations with children, and they're not allowed to arrest individuals. They are allowed to detain them with the firearm they carry.
All right, Dave?
Yes. For our second question, we're, just today, we learned that unemployment in Georgia is an all-time low. In Tennessee, it's a near-record low. Employers are struggling to fill jobs across all industries, and it's particularly true in public education, where we've had a lot of teacher retirements, resignations. So the question is, what steps as a school board member you would think we should take to, and what tactics and pay measures would you support to retain and recruit teachers, which are seen as so critical to student achievement? This question goes to you, Ben Connor, first. How do we best retain and recruit teachers?
Thank you. The first thing is that we need to make sure that we're paying our teachers a thriving wage. And what I mean by that is a wage in which they can thrive in our community the same way that you or I would. They deserve to be able to live and work in our community without needing a second job. The second part of it is a program that we already have in place, trying to find our own, students who have an interest in education already, and growing that, cultivating that, and funding them to help them get that degree and get back to Hamilton County, teaching in our backyard.
Mr. Baker, what should we do to retain and recruit teachers?
Well, based on the information from the previous debates and my own conversations, the pay didn't even make the top two, top three issues. It was burnout. And when you consider the fact that every teacher probably has a dozen bosses, some of them are in Nashville, some are in Washington, but they're all taking a piece of her and saying, you must do this, you must teach that. Whereas a teacher, when she got into the field, wanted to teach. So my proposal is, is that we reduce class sizes to a maximum of 15 students. Let the teacher teach. Get rid of the standardized testing that's taking 25% of their time. The idea is, they want to enjoy their work, not have to meet paper deadline after paper deadline.
Ben Connor, any response?
No.
Next question, here we go. In 2021, the Tennessee General Assembly enacted the Tennessee Literacy Success Act in an attempt to improve our state's literacy rates. The act outlines new expectations for how districts will measure and report on efforts to improve these literacy rates. Hamilton County's three poorest-performing schools for third-grade literacy serve large populations of students of color, while Hamilton County's three best-performing schools serve primarily white students. So, John Baker, you go first on this one. The question is, how should the school board address these disparities?
Well, it's interesting, because you just validated what I just said about testing requirements for Nashville and Washington. They're going to want all sorts of metrics for their money, so to speak. But to address the question you have there, I think we need to take a look at behavior. The, the, many teachers complained about the fact that the student behavior is one of the issues in trying to conduct the class. If somebody's acting up or acting out, that disrupts the learning of the rest of the people in that class. So I would take a shot at saying, behavior. You improve behavior, you're going to improve test scores.
All right, Ben Connor?
So coming back to the equity of it, we need to listen to the people. We need to listen to the people that are at those schools, but you listen to the educators and the parents of those schools. And if I could come full circle back to the question we just asked, we need to make sure that our program where we're trying to find teachers homegrown are at those schools, that we can bring them back to their backyard, to their, to our community, and to educate them properly and bring those scores up through a desire to learn.
John, you have any response to that?
Yeah.
All right. Next question comes from a student in District 6. It's on the topic of student mental health. So we're going to hear now from Jeffrey Chambers. Jeffrey?
Yeah, here.
Okay. I think we're having some technical problems. We ran into this last night, and I remember the person told us there was some sort of audio switch that wasn't on. So Emily will give you guys a chance to fix that. Let's ask another question in the meantime. You want to come back to me? All right. Let me do a substitute question here, and we'll try to get Jeffrey queued up in just a moment. Here we go. All right, this will go to you, Ben, first, and we'll get back to that young man's question shortly. For the first time this year, we have partisan races in Hamilton County schools. And there's a D by your name, Mr. Ben Connor, there's an R by your name, Mr. John Baker. What does that mean? First off, is that a good thing that we are now able to learn the political persuasions of our school board candidates? And if you're elected, what does that party affiliation mean when it comes to how you're going to serve, Ben?
First off, children should never be politicized, ever. It's about the children, not about anything else. I registered as a Democrat because I am one, but I do not need any national taglines or buzzwords or anything else to tell me how I need to listen, educate myself, and make the right choices for the children in the community of Hamilton County. At the end of the day, that is what I'm going to do. Leading starts with listening to the whole community.
All right, John Baker, you are running as a Republican. What does that mean for how you're going to serve as a school board member?
It means conservative values. It means Christian values. It means understanding that where we are today is not where we are supposed to be. The Democrat Party is a party of abortion. It's a party of grooming. It is a party that starts at the local level to affect their power. I am here to let you know, as a Republican, as a Christian, as a conservative, I will oppose all of that.
Ben Connor, any response?
It just amazes me, the, some people could not care enough about just the children and have to make it politicized. It's just amazing.
All right, Dave?
Thank you, candidates. Uh, move on to question and discussion about student behavior and bullying, which have been issues around the country. Student districts across the nation have enacted policies and practices that shift school discipline away from zero tolerance, which we've used, such as suspension and expulsion to discipline that is focused on teaching and engagement. So what are your views on discipline and bullying? And what policies and practices would you support the school board enacting to address those issues? John Baker, this question goes to you first. How do we address discipline and bullying in our schools?
Looking at the student code of conduct, I, I was just overwhelmed by how complex it is. We, we do have one positive aspect occurring now in the fact that Dr. Robertson had been previously principal of the Dawn School, which was a school for students with behavior issues. So hopefully, we'll see some improvement on the enforcement of this type of problem. The other part is that accurate reporting and teacher support on bullying is really, really important. I, I got a feeling at this point, and it's just a feeling, but teachers are being left to hang out to dry. They, they, they need a lot more support when it comes to bullying, because unless we address it, especially early on, it doesn't get any better at an end point. Thank you.
Ben Connor, your response?
Our children deserve to learn in a safe environment. Our teachers deserve to teach in a safe environment, period. That's why I support any type of mental health that we can give to the children and the educators, any type of support staff that we can have, including that I've been very vocal about, the SSO project, which are officers of law that are encouraged and trained to de-escalate and help the children. That's the biggest part.
John Baker, any rebuttal to that?
Well, I wish my memory was better, but I, I'm thinking the SROs and the SSOs, they're, they're kind of limited as to what they can do. So, you know, I'll just have to mull that one over.
Ben, did you have anything? You look like you were about to say something.
I, I've looked at it a whole bunch. I've, it's one of my biggest things. I've been interviewed by the paper about it, and I just continue to say that I, I feel like I know what I'm talking about here.
All right, we'll move on. We've heard a lot, we've talked a lot during these debates about student conduct. There's even been some talk about teacher conduct. Well, let's talk about school board member conduct. There have been some national and local concerns during school board meetings and outside school board meetings about board members making racist statements or inappropriate behavior that is conducted outside of school board meetings and school board members' personal lives. So what is your commitment? What, what promise and pledge can you make tonight as to the conduct that you would display if you're elected a school board member, both during meetings and in your personal life? Ben Connor, you lead off on this one.
So as a person who is a volunteer at the school, as a basketball coach, I've been background-checked and fingerprinted and checked out and the whole kit and caboodle. So my standard on paper of moral compass is quite well. I think that my service to my community is quite well, and I would challenge someone to find a person in, in the area that would say that I have imposed even a negative word about Mr. Baker. On the doorsteps, I simply say that we don't see eye to eye on everything. So I, I don't know how to say I'm a good person without sounding self-serving, but I, I would think that that would be how I would conduct myself as a good person and a good member of our society.
All right, John Baker, how about it? Your personal conduct if you're elected?
I would have to say the same thing as Ben has said. The idea is that I know getting into the public arena exposes my life. And to be honest with you, I, I am probably a target-rich area because of the fact that I, I was heading to Vietnam when I was 18 and worked on freighters and was in the Army and the Navy. So I, I led a pretty colorful life. Believe me, I could write a book. But the point is, is that I'm here and I'm ready to serve.
Any rebuttal, Ben?
Yeah.
All right, Dave?
Tennessee's been in the national spotlight for book bans and the challenges about some structural material. Hamilton County School Board is, has a book review committee formed to review reading material and content concerns and to explore options available to address those concerns. Where do you stand on efforts to regulate what books students are reading and have access to? John Baker, do you first? How do we control books, if at all, within a school system?
You know, the whole idea is that our schools are supposed to represent our community values. And when I attended the committee meetings on the book issue, I was amazed at the idea that kids should be encouraged to see and be exposed to all sorts of things that was way above their pay grade. What, what saddened me is that the procedure for removing a book from the library was long and onerous. My position is, if there's a complaint about a book, it should be pulled off the shelf, put it in the back room, and then let it earn its way to the main shelves again. But as it stands, that book could be a problem and be left out there forever. You know, we, we, we would have to keep coming back and addressing the same issue over and over again.
Ben Connor, your response?
So as mentioned in the question, we do already have a book review board as part of Hamilton County schools. I think that I trust the educators to put the right books in the hands of our students at the right age range. But I absolutely encourage my daughters to read above their pay grade. Anytime that they can take a step up and learn something new and better and enrich their lives and learn more about their community and the world that we live in, and learn something different from what they experience inside this house, then that's awesome. They need to learn and learn everything in order to be better members of our society.
John Baker, any rebuttal?
Above pay grade does not necessarily mean keeping them from studying physics or astronomy. What we're talking about is that, let's call it what it is, carnal knowledge of things that, at their age, they're not ready to process. They look at it and see it much differently than we do. So the idea is that the book review committee has demonstrated a feeling I have, which is we are civilians surrounded by highly educated professionals. It is our job to get
Go ahead and finish your sentence, if you like.
Okay. To get their ideas to match our ideals.
All right. Dave, I'm going to
If I could, real quick, I'm just going to say, I absolutely stand by my statement. I 100% encourage my children in the children of Hamilton County to learn as much as they possibly can.
All right, thank you very much. And by the way, in, in case any of you, either of you feel at some point that you're not getting your fair shake on rebuttals, keep in mind you have a closing statement at the end and also a chance to ask each other questions. So we don't want to, we don't want to prevent anybody from talking, but we do want to move it along. And Dave, I'm going to insert our question that the young man from, asked a while ago that we weren't able to bring you. We have him up now. This is on the topic of student mental health, coming from Jeffrey Chambers. Jeffrey?
Sorry, gentlemen, I still don't hear anything.
All right.
I don't hear it either.
We apologize to you two and to Jeffrey. It, it took three times last night, so we're going to hope for a third time being a charm again. So we're not going to forget that question. But in the meantime, we will move on. Next question comes from a resident of District 6. What is your stance with regard to LGBTQ initiatives taking place in schools? Ben Connor?
Um, I think that we have different clubs that are allowed in different levels. Obviously, if a high school student wants to start their, their club for however they feel necessary, and as long as they have their principal's approval, then I stand by the choices of any student to feel represented in their own skin.
John Baker?
Kids in school are dealing with a lot of things, hormones, peer pressures, so on and so forth. Several years ago, I, I audit classes at UTC, and I went to a drag queen show that they had there, and it was entertaining. However, it was also an opportunity for them to start recruiting. So when you start forming groups and clubs and so forth, kids want to belong. And if they are felt welcomed and part of a group or something like that, they may head down a road that is not ideal for them. This, this is, this is not the Boy Scouts that we're talking about. This is, this is much, much different. So just take a look at the suicide rates among transgenders, and you're going to wish your kid picked a different road.
Ben?
I'll gladly rebuttal. The idea that we need to ignore people for the way that they are is, is abhorrent. When my cousin came out to my grandmother, my Mema, a woman of faith, looked him dead in the eye and said, I, I'm not mad, God made you, and he wouldn't have made you gay if he didn't want you to be that way. So I, I stand by the statement that I want to make sure that every child in Hamilton County feels included. And when they do, those suicide rates you mentioned, John, will go down very, very quickly.
This next question comes from a parent also living in your district, another one. And they asked the question, compromise is the engine of progress. Will you be able to set aside your personal political views and work towards solutions that best serve students? John, what do you say to that parent?
Let's talk common sense. What's the problem? How can we address it? So far, the solutions that I've been So far, the solutions that I've been seeing is to throw more and more money at it. The reality is, is that we don't need more experts. We need more teachers. And if we're going to get more teachers, we need to provide that small class size. Because as it stands now, there is an exodus from the public schools into the private and charter schools. And that's not going to stop until we can correct what the problems are.
And Connor, how will you work across the aisle and across those of different political views?
This feels a lot like the, a different way to ask this question. We've already answered before. And I'm going to state what I said before, leading starts with listening. And I'm not getting on the school board to be the Democrat on the school board. I'm getting on the school board to be a Hamilton County citizen who listens to the District Six and Hamilton County residents to come to the right choice for our kids.
All right, let's move on. Here's a question that can be answered in something of a general fashion. But I'd say you two have gotten to know each other or your or each other's views during this campaign. So let me just put it out there. Voters have a choice coming up, if they're early voting now or if they're voting on Election Day, week after next. And so my my question to you then, and John, you get to answer this first. If you're elected, what do you bring to the table? How will you be a different school board member than Ben Connor? Why should someone vote for you instead of that guy?
I've been blessed with several careers. Business owner, water plant operator, code enforcement officer, gunfighter, things like that. But the point is, is that this is going to take common sense. And what I hear are the same equity words, diversity, inclusion, equity, and so on and so forth, none of which gets to the root of the problem. It's always just that that just send you down a rabbit hole. When I get on the board, I'm going to keep a laser focus on what that problem is. And I'll challenge a person who starts using these diversity, inclusion, equity words because I know they're just bluffing at that point.
Ben Connor, let's just turn it around. You're elected and John Baker's not. What do you bring to the table that he he doesn't? How are you going to be different?
So John highlighted it, making sure that we do have equity in our schools and that we're caring for each child individually to make sure that they all reach their potential. I'm someone who has been in the schools. I've volunteered in every aspect of the schools at multiple different schools. I currently sit on the Board of Directors for one of our local preschools. I'm the one that has already gotten the experience in the real world and challenging questions and getting us through COVID without closing down a preschool that had an 80% population of essential workers with students there. I've done it, and I'm going to keep doing it for the citizens of Hamilton County when I'm elected to the school board.
There's been talk about establishing a technical school downtown in the mayoral campaign and elsewhere. How would you prioritize this over the close to $1 billion facility needs that have been identified at existing schools? And Ben Connor will ask you this question first. Should we have a downtown technical school?
I really love the idea of a technical school. I I really do. I think it's an awesome way to make sure that not only does Hamilton County have the next doctor, but they have the next plumber, contractor, and everything we need to be a thriving and thriving society. I do, though, want to talk about the future-ready schools. We have so many of those in our area and in our county that we need to utilize as well. We need to make sure that we're developing people that need to go to college and people that may not want to go to college equally, so that they can be contributing members of Hamilton County and give back what we're giving them in a public education.
John Baker, your response?
I agree with Ben. The the future-ready curriculums that I've looked at are incredible. And and so I, yes, it would be nice if we had just tons of money and our maintenance was up to snuff to build that new tech school downtown. But the reality is, is we are not that rich, nor are we up to date on maintenance. So the the future-ready schools and even chat states offerings would satisfy just about any student going into just about any field.
All right, folks, third time is going to be the charm. I have faith. I know you have faith. We're going to hear from, we're going to hear from Jeffrey Chambers. Jeffrey?
And I am a senior technical theater major at the Chattanooga High Center for Creative Arts. As students, we are living in some of the most challenging times of public education with the rise of a global pandemic that has been upon us for the past couple of years. My question is, as a member of the school board, how will you make it your duty and your mission to support the mental health of students, families, and teachers in the school system? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. The question's about supporting the mental health of students and teachers. John Baker, you're up first.
I answered this question last fall when I said that the mental health of the students is going to be a far greater epidemic than COVID ever was. What has happened to them over the last several years is going to leave scars and it's going to create a lot of issues. We have a good staff of counselors and and social workers on the school system that should be able to address this. So if if a student needs help, the help is there. I don't know what more we can do other than not much more. We we've hired the people. They're in place. They're ready to go.
Ben?
So we haven't hired the people. We don't have enough guidance counselors. We don't have enough mental support staff. There are some schools that share them across multiple schools. And especially if there's a student asking us the question of how they can get better and more mental help help, we're clearly dropping the ball. And we need to listen to the student and find ways to get ourselves fully staffed so that we don't let anything fall through the cracks.
John, do you have any rebuttal on that?
No.
All right.
Some studies indicate that less than 40% of our youngest students arrive to school ready to learn. And that rate is even much less than that in some areas with a concentrated poverty in our Hamilton County district. What are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education and how the school system can work with early childhood systems to ensure the success of students entering kindergarten? We'll start with this to you, John, first. What what, how should we work with early childhood programs?
Now, you're talking pre-K.
Getting children ready for kindergarten, yes.
Okay.
For kindergarten.
My feeling is, is that our school system is not set up to be able to run pre-K schools. There are lots of churches and private organizations that already can provide this. So the idea that you want a school system that's failing at educating kids in grades K through 12 and then give them babies just doesn't sound like a great plan to me.
And Connor, are there's anything the school system could do to help ensure more success for students entering kindergarten?
Absolutely. Working together with these different places that we're doing preschool at. I personally am the president of Board Directors for one of our local preschools. And we work together with our local kindergarten to make sure that the children in pre-K are learning the things that will get them ready for kindergarten. Every single step up that we give a child so that they can reach their potential is one more better thing we've given to that child. Why would we ever stop that?
All right, gentlemen, we have time for one more question. I'm sure, go ahead. Yes.
What Ben just said is not quite true. Any advantage gained by early education pre-K is lost by the time they're in the first grade. So you 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 don't see any big advantage there. Thank you.
According to who, John?
He said, according to who, John?
According to who? Do you you have a stat? Because I could run in the office and get about a dozen that that disprove that.
And I can go get a dozen too. So here we are.
All right, we may let you come back to that later. We have time for one more question before we turn it over to you to question each other and give your closing statements. Let's talk about District Six. In my opinion, Hamilton County District Six is one of the most interesting, diverse districts in Hamilton County. You got a little bit of everything going for you there. So Ben, I'll ask you this question first. Have you visited the schools in District Six? Are you familiar with the schools? And if so, tell me a couple or three things you would do specifically to advocate and help the students, teachers in District Six.
Absolutely. So one of the first things that I did, I got to meet with the new, well, newer Red Bank principal at the high school, Chris Tillot. And he, honest to God, had me wanting to run through a brick wall. I was so ready to learn. When getting done with him, talking about the things that made people want to get up in the morning, wanted to learn, wanted to be at school. And then I also got the chance to meet with Jill Evans, the principal at Rivermont. And we talked about simple things that could be better at her school to help facilitate a better learning environment for the children. And they were really awesome things that we're currently working to try to get for her. And then finally, at home at Normal Park, where my girls go, I I work tirelessly as, again, volunteering in every aspect. So I I would like to say that, yes, I I know the schools well. I've visited all of them. So.
All right, John Baker, tell me about District Six and how you'll help specifically your schools.
How I can help specifically?
Or what you would advocate for for those schools?
That is a good question because of the fact that being a civilian, I have made an appointment with the principal at Rivermont, but it was canceled. So I really didn't have much to bring to the table other than a curiosity factor. What I have been doing is studying schools policy, listening to the minutes, and learning how the schools operate. The thing that blows me away is that there are so many levels in the table of organization that I had no idea that we had multiple levels of superintendents. So as to what I will do for the schools when I become a board member, they will let me know and I will be asking a thousand questions and having coffee with them.
All right, thank you both. Now we come to the point in the debate where we give each of you the opportunity to ask your opponent whatever you want to. If you feel that something has been said this evening or during the course of the campaign that you want to set the record straight, here's your chance. And John Baker, you go first with your question for Ben Connor.
Well, I had mentioned earlier about being a Democrat. And perhaps that perhaps that probably didn't sound good. But experience and watching what's been happening through school systems around the country makes me suspicious of what you're actually going to do when you get on the school board. So what is it that you are going to do when you get on the school board?
It's a great question because it has nothing to do with being a Democrat or a Republican. So what I'm going to do when I get on the school board is I'm going to address the situation that we have that the schools are over 86 years average age. Then I'm going to address the fact that we need to pay our teachers a living, thriving wage. And we need to make sure that they have the reading interventionalists, the librarians, the music teachers, the PE teachers at every school to make sure that our children are learning everything that they deserve. And finally, I'm going to make sure that our students are safe. Safety is my, is just paramount, as we've mentioned multiple times throughout this conversation. I want my children and the children of Hamilton County and the educators to teach my children in a safe learning environment. I will do those three things as fast as I possibly can and with them constantly on my mind as we grow.
All right, Ben, we turn it over to you now because you get to ask John Baker anything you wish.
Okay, so how exactly, John, since you keep referencing the the budget of the school, how will you pay for your class size proposal?
There are things in the budget that has me scratching my head. For example, the 8 million that's being set aside for learning loss when our schools were not shut down but 10% of the time. So there's 8 million there. I got a feeling that if we look around, we can find the money for those additional teachers.
Thank you, candidates. And that brings us to the end of our questions for tonight's debate. Now we'll conclude with closing statements from each candidate. And each of you will have two minutes to make a closing statement. John Baker, we begin with you.
All right. One of the things that I want to do when I get on the school board is to initiate a whistleblower program. I will take $500 out of my own pocket and offer that information, offer that for information of bullying, violations of state and county laws, and teaching or implementing unapproved courses or textbooks. The other thing that I will push for is authorizing staff and teachers, faculty and teachers to be able to conceal carry on school property. As mentioned earlier, we've had over 2,000 shootings, 200 just in the last couple of years. The idea that teachers should be defenseless is abhorrent to me. So we can do it. TCA, what is it, 39? Let's see, where are we? 39171309. We are so close to qualifying and authorizing faculty to do this. I want to give the mama bears out there some claws. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Connor, your closing statement?
Leading starts with listening. I believe leadership involves listening. I will always strive to listen, learn, educate myself, treat people with equity and respect. I'm pledging to listen to the parents, the educators, and the experts and to educate myself before I make a vote that impacts the children of Hamilton County and the community at large. This is for the children and all about their learning and education. I'm humbly asking for your vote for Ben Connor on August 4th, Thursday, August 4th. Please vote Ben Connor.
All right, gentlemen, thank you both. We appreciate your time, your interest, your concern, your passion. And we wish you both the best, and we hope that win or lose, you will do everything you can to support our schools. And on that note, let me turn it back over to Carrie Randolph, Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0. And Carrie, since this is our last debate, thank you and your staff for all you've done to make it work. And Dave, you and the folks at the TFP as well.
Thank you so much, David. I'll echo that. Thanks. Thank you, candidates, for participating. Again, for your interest in serving in this vital leadership role. Thank you again to David Carroll and Dave Lesnar and the Chattanooga Times Free Press and Local 3 News teams. Thank you to Jeffrey, the student from Chattanooga High Center for Creative Arts, who shared his great question tonight. And then many community members who submitted such excellent questions. And last but not least, thank you to you, our viewers. This concludes the 2022 Hamilton County School Board debates. If you missed the first part of tonight's debate for District Six or any of the other debates in contested school board districts, the video recordings are available on Local 3 News YouTube channel and at timesfreepress.com. Don't forget that early voting is taking place now through July 30th. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is July 28th. I encourage you to head over to CHAT2, that's C-H-A-T-T, the number 2.org backslash vote, where you will find more information on the candidates, the upcoming election on August 4th, and how to request your absentee ballot. In closing, 2022 has been another trying year for our community. Strong leadership on the Hamilton County School Board is needed now more than ever as we continue to make Hamilton County Schools the best school district in the state of Tennessee for our kids. And so I thank you for your engagement on this critical topic. Have a good evening and stay safe out there.
Thank you.